Excellent. I call the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission of September 8th, 2021 to order, and it's 6:05. Ms. Peonyard, could you please do the roll call?
Eric Cameron Medlock.
Here.
Vice Chair Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Jerry Greenfield.
Here.
Ron Heberlein.
Here.
Erin Woods.
Here.
Brianna Tsimke.
Here.
Olive Gallagher.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we are good now. And for the staff to lead us in the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which extends, one nation, united under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizen input. This is a time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. And we have two items on the public hearing, the Town Center Streetscape and the Middle Housing. So other than those, if you have a comment, this would be a time to provide it. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either in the City Hall or via Zoom, would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand and/or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now.
Chair Masbah, there are no citizens at City Hall who wish to speak at this time, and we're checking on Zoom. And no one has raised their hand on Zoom.
Excellent. Thank you. The first item is administrative matters, consideration of August 11, 2021, Planning Commission minutes that were distributed. Are there any changes to the minutes? I don't see any of the commissioners moving in that direction. Therefore, it is approved as submitted.
Second.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. And I would like to read the legislative hearing procedure now. Matters before the Planning Commission involve legislative public hearings. These are somewhat different than the quasi-judicial hearings conducted by the City's Development Review Board. The Planning Commission would like to hear from anyone who has testimony to offer that is relevant to the issues before the Planning Commission. If you wish to testify tonight, you need to complete a testimony card. For those who are here in person or in the City Hall in person, you can complete the testimony card in the room. For members of the public participating remotely with a Zoom meeting platform, digital comment cards are already filed with recorder. But we also, we ask you to please indicate now or after a presentation, a desire to testify by sending a message to the recorder at City Hall using the Zoom chat function. For those people joining the meeting, my phone only, you will be unmuted after the staff presentation and ask one at a time if you wish to testify. Please note that testimony may also be submitted by email during the hearing by emailing the following email address: And please confirm with the recorder through the Zoom chat option that you emailed your comments. Your email will then be read into the record. Remain in the meeting until the comments are received and read aloud. Written comments or testimony received after the public hearing, as closed, cannot be considered. Because your testimony gives you legal standing in the matter for which you are testifying, it is important that you provide your full name and address at the beginning of your comments or if you prefer not to state your address aloud in the public forum, state that your address is as provided on the testimony card you submitted and make your statement. When your name is called to testify, if you're present in the council chambers, please come forward to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone for the record. If you are participating in the meeting remotely using the Zoom phone or web platform, please wait to be unmuted by the recorder before stating your name and comments for the record. When you testify, please address your comments to the criteria that will be reviewed by the city staff at the start of the hearing. Some of the issues that come before the Planning Commission are fairly complicated. For that reason, we especially appreciate any specific recommendations or suggestions that you may have. We will ask you to avoid redundant testimony. If you agree with testimony that has already been given, just tell us that. If we have a large number of people interested in testifying, we may limit the time allotted to each member of the public to three minutes. At the end of your testimony, members of the Commission may have questions for you. Thank you for taking the time to participate in the hearing tonight and help us to deal with these issues. I would now like to go to a public hearing on Planning Commission Resolution Number LP 21-002. A Wilsonville Planning Commission Resolution recommending the Wilsonville City Council adopt the Wilsonville Town Center Streetscape Plan as an appendix to the Wilsonville Town Center Plan, a sub-element of the comprehensive plan. I open the public hearing on this item, and I will go to Ms. Bateshell to introduce the staff and the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Masbah, Commissioners. My name is Miranda Bateshell, Planning Director for the City of Wilsonville. I am honored and excited to introduce this item this evening. The Town Center Plan is obviously near and dear to my heart. I was the project manager for that plan, which, over the course of three years, we worked on with the citizens of the City of Wilsonville. As you know, it was a multi-year effort. We had thousands of people engaged in that project. And over that time, they developed a vision for the Town Center and for the future of this heart and hub of the community of Wilsonville. They want it to be a bright and active space. They want it to be connected, to be accessible. They want places for the community to gather. And they want it to be vibrant, not just in form and design, but in terms of activity and economic vibrance. So it's really going to transform over time. Placemaking was a priority in really helping to achieve that vision. That happens both through social programming, things that are going on in the Town Center, but also in the public realm design. And so a major implementation action coming from the Town Center Plan was the Streetscape Plan, which you have seen at a few work sessions prior to this evening's hearing. And it has come together, and I think what is a very beautiful plan and a design that really suits and speaks to the City of Wilsonville and the design features that have been prioritized over time. This plan will really help us as we guide developers in their projects and as the city works on its own capital improvement projects to really help bring the public realm to life in the Town Center. So with that, I will introduce the project manager, Philip Bradford, Associate Planner with the City of Wilsonville. And he will introduce the rest of the team and go over the Streetscape Plan with you this evening. Thank you. Hold on. Did you mute yourself?
I did.
Can you still hear us? Commission? Yes, okay. Good, we didn't lose audio. You don't... You don't need to put your audio on as long as the microphone's on.
Okay, so everyone can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Sorry about that crazy echo. My name is, or, well, good evening, Chair Masbah, I'm Planning Commissioners. My name is Philip Bradford, Associate Planner with the City of Wilsonville. Also here tonight is Ben Weber with Sarah Architects. I'm excited to present the Town Center Streetscape Plan. This plan is a result of nearly a year's worth of community engagement, work sessions with Planning Commission and City Council, and technical advisory meetings with city staff. And this is culminated in a final product that will create a cohesive and attractive look for streets within Town Center. And over the next few decades, as Town Center redevelops, the Streetscape Plan will help Town Center achieve the goals of being a vibrant community hub of the Town Center Plan. Before we start the presentation, I would like to thank Planning Commission and City Council for the feedback provided during the work sessions we've held on the Streetscape Plan since March of 2020. I'd also like to thank city staff from Smart, Public Works, Parks and Rec, and the Engineering Division for all their input throughout the process, all the members of the public who participated in surveys and public forums and the stakeholder interviews that were conducted as part of our community engagement. All of this input shaped the design to be in line with the same community-driven spirit of the Town Center Plan that this project is implementing. I believe the end result has taken into account all the feedback received, and once constructed, will be a beautiful place to live, work, and play. Lastly, I'd like to also thank the consultant team, Sarah Architects, for all their hard work on these designs. The materials in front of you that are entered into the record tonight are Resolution LP 21-0002, along with Exhibit A, which is the staff report, and its attachments, which, the first of which is the Town Center Streetscape Plan, which contains several appendices, including the preliminary concept materials, public engagement summary, transportation system plan update summary, signage and wayfinding plan summary, and the product and material specification sheets. Attachment B contains the Streetscape Plan Findings Report, which outlines compliance with all state, regional, and local requirements. And finally, Attachment C, which is the Planning Commission Record Index, which contains all the materials that have gone before Planning Commission throughout the entire project. The public hearing materials were posted on the website one week prior to this hearing, and notices were mailed to property owners within 250 feet of the Town Center project boundary. And staff also provided additional notice of the hearing via email to the Interested Parties list for Town Center, posted the notice of the hearing to the Wilsonville spokesman, and thus meeting all the noticing requirements for public hearings. For whatever reason, I'm not able to move on to the next slide. There we go. So the agenda for tonight will be covering the project background and the context. And then I will pass the presentation to Ben Weber with Sarah Architects to discuss the implementation and how the Streetscape Plan implements the goals and aspirations of the Town Center Plan. Then you will be hearing from me again to cover the changes that we've made between this evening and the previous work session that we had with the Planning Commission. And I will conclude with the next steps and staff recommendation. So as previously stated, the project is a key implementation item of the Town Center Plan. And the development of a Streetscape Design Plan is a priority placemaking strategy in the implementation matrix and is one of the first items that the city is implementing as a result of the list of implementation items within the Town Center Plan. Due to the robust public engagement in Town Center Plan, where residents preferred a palette of stone, wood, brick, and glass, and a modern design direction reflective of a newer community, along with the other preferences noted in the Signage and Wayfinding Master Plan, which also impacts Town Center, the project team drew from these aesthetic preferences. This allowed us to begin with three preliminary concepts in the fall of 2020, and we moved forward with refining these concepts in winter of 2021, utilizing additional surveys on Let's Talk Wilsonville and confirmation from Planning Commission and City Council. The final result tonight is a hybrid concept. If you remember from when we made that decision, that incorporates the river environment concept and includes elements of the technological innovation concept. As numerous comments from the public noted that the sidewalks and motive space of this concept were more in line with providing clear and direct connections throughout Town Center. And we are here tonight in line with the project schedule for adoption. This slide contains a sampling of public engagement activities that were conducted as far as the project. The team had to think creatively in terms of conducting public engagement for this plan as the project kicked off just at the same time when stay-at-home orders and social distancing measures began in Oregon. All of our engagement activities were held remotely via Zoom or utilized surveying on Let's Talk Wilsonville. And these images are a collection of some of the survey questions that were posed to the public. We also have a screen capture of one of the public forums that we held with one of the questions that was asked to the public. We also had a free-form question on Let's Talk where residents or interested parties could provide any feedback they had on other Streetscape designs they felt strongly about. And all of this was done in addition to five Planning Commission work sessions, three City Council work sessions, and two stakeholder interviews. We had deep foundations. The Streetscape Plan accomplishes many of the goals found within the Town Center Plan. The first goal is accomplished by the selection of resilient tree species and opportunities for lush planting and stormwater facilities throughout Town Center. The attractive Streetscapes in the plan will accomplish Goal Two by creating three different investment levels, which will be cohesive and provide a drastically improved condition compared to the current streets. And while the Town Center Plan and Development Code increased the mixed-use opportunities within Town Center, this plan builds upon that foundation and provides an attractive Streetscape for the future mix of uses. The direct connections and accessible surfaces and multimodal-focused design of the plan will also work to accomplish Goal Four, making Town Center more accessible for all. Goal Five will be satisfied through the compelling designs for future spaces, like the promenades and plazas through Town Center, which the Streetscape provides design guidance for. And overall, the adoption of this plan will lead to further business development and prosperity within Town Center as an attractive public realm, and accessible streets will help attract activity and investment within Town Center. I'll now pass the presentation to Ben Weber, who will discuss how we arrived at the final Streetscape concept and go over several renderings that are included in the plan and how they relate to the Town Center Plan and goals. And Ben, when you are ready to go to the next slide, just let me know, and I will move the presentation forward.
All right, thank you, Philip. First, I should check that everyone can hear me. All right, I see heads nodding. All right, well, thank you, Philip, for that introduction and background on the past year of work. Thank you, Chair Masbah and Planning Commissioners, for your attention and focus on the project tonight and all of the previous work sessions and meetings we've had over the past year. As Philip mentioned, it's been incredibly valuable input that you've been able to provide and has really helped, I think, shape the success of this project and the linkages to the Town Center Plan work conducted previously. So as Philip mentioned, there were a number of community forums, Planning Commission work sessions, and other events through winter 2020 and into the early months of 2021, where we were dealing with concept design for those three different concepts and illustrating those using graphics such as what you're seeing on the screen here right now. So we're sort of jumping ahead to the slide to a representation of that preferred concept that blended the river environment and the technological innovation into the hybrid preferred approach. And we first brought this to you during the March 2021 Planning Commission meeting, in which you provided a wide range of input and generally approved us to move ahead with this overall concept into some of the more detailed planning and design work. So this represents, as Philip mentioned, that clarity and linearity to the motive space, sort of as represented by the blue and purple spaces on that diagram, with those punctuations of landscape and stormwater and sort of accent pieces within the street, and those green planters and elsewhere. We also represent that with a bit more detailed plan view in the bottom left. And at this point, we were starting to narrow down and refine our selection of trees, concrete patterns, benches, and other furnishing elements that would really define and build out this concept. You can jump ahead, Philip. So between that March meeting and then quickly into April 2021, at Philip's initiation, we got into rendering and really starting to model out this concept. So this was an image we showed, or pardon me, a previous version of this image, but a similar image of this was shown to City Council in April of this year to really help us as a design team flesh out a number of the spatial details and the configuration of all of the different design elements, from trees to lighting to some of the particulars of the bench design and how that all interacted with the multimodal improvements that you're seeking to make across your streets. As well as, you know, not just detailing some of those design considerations, but really trying to reflect the way the Streetscape investment supports those six key goals, as Philip mentioned. You can start to see more how the Streetscape interacts with private site development and eases mobility to buildings and plaza spaces, how it emphasizes walking and biking access, traffic calming, and bringing ecology into your Streetscape environment. So we sort of hoped at this point that this image would help reflect and represent the ways that the Streetscape Plan not only included a design, but clear implementation steps to bringing this design concept to fruition and implementation on all of the different street types around the Town Center. We can keep jumping ahead here. Now we just have, I'm going to show you, three different locations around the Town Center. As you recall, we did specific designs for seven different prototype locations. These were all consistent with key locations identified in the Town Center Plan. And I think by using all seven of those prototypes, we were able to capture, I think, a pretty wide range of street types, locations, and then three different investment levels. Signature, which is what's shown here on screen, as well as Enhanced and Standard Investment Levels, which you all helped shape over the past few months advising on what streets are suitable for which. So just focusing on the promenade here quickly. You're seeing the Signature custom-built and installed bench areas, significant landscaping and stormwater features running along the spine of the promenade, the custom concrete pattern with those tessellated shapes. And then key elements like this two-way cycle track, which are part of your Emerald Chain connection. These prototypes were really intended to test and display how the concept and all of the material and furnishing elements would be applied in specific locations but be tailored to those unique conditions. But the promenade is not a vehicular street. It is more of a linear park in a sense, but it's still a key part of your mobility network and incredibly important for acting sort of as the front porch for a number of the businesses and residential uses that could be redeveloped, built to the north and south of the promenade. On the next location, this is Park Place redesign. North is to the left here, and then Town Center Park is on the top of this image. So this is not only a minor realignment of the street, but an inclusion also of this continued cycle track as part of the Emerald Chain. And you'll notice just the ways that the Streetscape investment ties into an open space on the top of this image, whereas it ties into buildings and private plazas on the bottom side. So we have a number of different contexts within the Town Center to relate this to. So this is also a Signature design that's serving a different blend of mobility needs. And then the final location here, a bit further south. This is an extension of your Main Street, the Park Place extension. There is no road here today. This is a proposed new alignment through an existing parking lot. And this is sort of a more traditional configuration of a Main Street with shared vehicular lanes, much wider sidewalks, marked and improved crossings, and overall investment in the pedestrian network, the bicycling network, and creating a lot of spaces for businesses to spill out into cafes and street seats. There's abundant bike parking. There's flexibility overall in the street design. And then a lot of gathering spaces and a lot of landscape and stormwater spaces that reflect the investment in the street, but also just create really welcoming gathering and lingering places for people to live, work, and play along this street. So those are really just three of the example locations. Many more, or the other four, are in the Complete Streetscape Plan that you have a copy of, and those reflect some of the enhanced and the standard investment levels that we also took into consideration. So again, we're hoping that this design, as expressed here and in those other prototypes, really reflects those goals and that you can see the way that the Streetscape investment and these projects over time can really bolster the vibrancy of the Town Center. So that's sort of my quick summary of the design process. I think Philip's going to take it back to describe some of the resolution of a couple items that were still outstanding as of last month.
Thank you, Ben. So by now, we're all familiar with the standard Enhanced and Signature investment levels, but I just wanted to take a moment to cover the key design elements that are going to be used in the different investment levels in the plan. We have made these selections, and they are linked in the plan and also included in the appendix. And these product selections are everything from bike racks to pavement types, benches, tree grates, ADA tactile pads, water fountains, trash and recycling bins, and volards. And all of these choices directly link back to the community's preference for a modern, natural aesthetic. And we believe that these product selections capture that, regardless of which in... regardless of which investment level they are utilized in. And speaking of the investment levels, this map is included in your packet and incorporates some of the feedback we heard last time. The promenade locations are now extended to meet the public streets that they connect to. And another change to this is that the Rebecca intersection, which is the primary north-south bike lane through Town Center, now receives a enhanced intersection with Wilsonville Road, setting that apart more as a gateway into the heart of Town Center, but slightly less so than the Main Street. And then we also included enhanced investment level to the south of the I-5 Pedestrian Bridge Plaza to further differentiate that area. Aside from that, the map should remain primarily consistent with what was shown at the last work session. Wanted to provide an update on that as well. And with lighting, the plan has now been revised to include the PGE product in all of the renderings except for one that now shows the Rama product so that you can see the aesthetic trade-off between the PGE compliant list and the fixture that we believe is the best fit for the other design choices in the plan and meets the aspirations of the community for Town Center. Some language within the plan has been changed to add further flexibility. This is a very long-range implementation for Town Center for full build-out and aware unaware of the beginning of development in Town Center. And that may take place after we have a new public works facility that would have the potential to store custom fixtures such as the Rama. So therefore, we've included language to state that at the time of development, we will be preferring the Rama fixture if we do have the capacity to store custom fixtures. Otherwise, we will move forward with PGE option A, and we've rendered those in the plan. And since these are subject to change, because PGE is in charge of maintaining the list, our preference is that if a more contemporary option becomes available, we will move forward with the more contemporary option on the PGE list at the time of development. There have been additional changes to the street trees and accent trees within the plan. There's been further alignment with the Urban Forest Management Plan. Additional tree species have been included. And these trees have been shown to be resilient. There are existing tree species that we've selected that are existing in Wilsonville. And they have fared well through the heat wave and ice storm this year. So we believe that these additional trees will provide additional flexibility and resilience going forward. The selections focused on tree species that are more columnar, taking into account that there will be taller buildings in Town Center with minimal setbacks and that will remove any sort of interference those trees may have as they grow. The tree lists within the future Urban Forest Management Plan will serve as a guide for tree selections in the future if there are any issues with availability at the time of development. And that concludes the minor changes that have been made since the previous work session so all planning commissioners can be aware of these changes. And with that, staff recommends that Planning Commission forward a recommendation to City Council to adopt the Town Center Streetscape Plan as an appendix to the Town Center Plan, a sub-element of the comprehensive plan. And just to cover quickly the next steps, if the project will continue, to City Council for a public hearing on October 4, 2021. And with that, Ben and I are available for any questions that you may have for us about the Streetscape Plan. Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
Chair Mezba, I have one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Philip and Ben, thank you again. Fantastic presentation and all the hard work. And it was great to come into fruition finally. The question I have is around the Emerald Chain and the cycle track. Is there going to be a cycle track throughout the length of the Emerald Chain or just from the bridge landing to M12 and through the Town Center Park area?
I can take that question. The Emerald Chain will have a consistent cycle track from the bridge through Town Center utilizing the promenade, then heading south adjacent to Town Center Park. And then it will continue east down Quartz Side. And then the cycle track will head south towards Memorial Park as it exits Town Center on Town Center Loop East. So there will be a seamless.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, yeah, that helps, Philip, and that helps resolve. As the presentation was going along, I realized that that was the answer to the questions that we had been emailing back and forth about around the consistency. And so, yeah, I'm good now. Thank you.
Very good. Any other question from the commission? I don't see any hands up. We will go to the public testimony. Gentle reminder to the public who may want to provide testimony. You will be unmuted and asked if you wish to testify. You can inform the staff that is listening to you that you do want to testify when you're unmuted. If you have emailed a comment, please state that for the record and staff will read those comments into the record. You need to fill out a testimony card either physically or via email. And you need to state your name and address for the record, either as part of your testimony or provide it on the testimony card for the record. And the commissioners may have some questions for you. So we are ready for public testimony. Do we have anybody wanting to provide testimony for the Town Center Streetscape Plan?
There are no participants in the Zoom raising their hands to participate or provide comments.
And have we received any written or email comments?
There has been one additional comment that came in via emails this afternoon from Susie Myers with Capital Realty that was sent by me via email to all planning commissioners just so that you are aware the additional public comment came in. And that will also be entered into the record tonight.
Very good, very good. But we don't have any comments in that case. I will close the public testimony. And with the... If the commission agrees, we can close the public hearing. I don't see anybody wanting to have continued discussion before we close the public hearing. So I call the public hearing closed at 6:45. And we can, the commission now can discuss Resolution Number LP 210002. Who wants to start? And if there isn't discussion, then we will be open to a motion and a second to adopt it. I don't know where we are at, whether or not there is still discussion that's necessary.
Remind me of the process. Will we be discussing any of the comments that have come in? I remember speaking one about the one today about the transit center stations, I think, or the bus stops.
We can ask staff about it, yes. It sounds like you're interested, Commissioner Willard, to hear staff respond to that comment?
Yes, please.
Who's going to take that from staff?
I can take that. Is there anything specific about the comment that you'd like staff to expand upon?
Well, I was just trying to find the comment, but I don't have it in front of me. But I was just curious, is it possible to make that recommendation that the community member was stating about the selection of the transit stop? I don't even remember what they're called. She called them in her email. Yeah.
I believe so, that we would just change the text per the recommendation between now and City Council. So in case anyone is not familiar with the email that went out based on the public comment we received today. Susan Myers wrote in regarding the bus shelter and the language that's in the draft plan, and I can read it exactly. Luckily, I opened to the page that it's on, states that Smart and the city of Wilsonville are considering other transit shelter products specific to Town Center. And I believe the email requested the wording on that to be stronger to say, "Smart and the city of Wilsonville shall develop," I'm not sure exactly of the wording, "but develop a Town Center-specific transit shelter that works more closely with the designs of the Streetscape Plan." In our discussions, just to provide some background with Smart, that the shelter that's included in the plan is the shelter that they currently use that exists within Town Center. And it's the plan to move forward with using that shelter. However, Smart would like to apply for grant funding to come up with a more unique design that works with the plan in the future so that we would not use this design and do something that looks much more in line with the aesthetic that has been chosen for the plan thus far. But that is dependent on different funding mechanisms available in the future.
Okay, okay.
So, Phil, are you saying that if there isn't any money, then we are going to stay with the default shelter?
Possibly. I'm not sure, since I'm not super familiar with the different funding grants that are available to Smart and that might come up in the future to do a custom bus shelter. But if any other staff want to chime in, if there's additional info you may have on how that gets done, that would be helpful. But I would say that if we did not get additional funding to develop a custom design, then we would default to the one that we already have.
Commissioner Greenfield. Of course, I'd like to say that I very much appreciate the general comment that Ms. Myers offered. I think it's very helpful to have that kind of support from a major stockholder and the, I would always say, interested party in the whole development. And certainly, she represents a company that is a major player in Town Center. And she's been a major player in our planning efforts for years herself. I don't find anything drastically different in the language that Ms. Myers offers from the language that's already in the report. Generally, we don't, in our planning reports like this, use the GAO language, which is more... We are legislative after all, but we avoid that kind of very direct and restrictive legislative language in our resolutions. But it seems to me that what Smart is contemplating is very much included in the language we've already got in the report. So I personally don't see a real need to strengthen that. I don't object to strengthen that, but I don't see it in a way that really makes a lot of difference, a lot of sense, if we don't go so far as to say "shall" this or that.
Thank you for that comment. My own kind of read is that we have made specific design decisions for Town Center in everything else, lights and seats and sidewalks and everything else. The spirit of the comment, to me, seems to convey that we should have a special design for the bus shelter as well. And so whether we use "shall" or not is not as much material, in my thinking, as admitting that just like everything else that we have made special in the Town Center, the city is going to do everything it can to make sure that the bus shelters also have a theme that goes with the rest of the Town Center. You know, we may have to do fundraising. I don't know. I mean, if money isn't available out there, maybe we should be also thinking about fundraising. Commissioner Everline?
Yeah, Chair Mezba. So I think what gets me with the picture that's in the presentation is that the stark color. So I went on to the Oregon Corrections Enterprises website, found a brochure for their bus shelters, and it comes in different frame colors. It comes in different roof colors. So I think that there is, there are options out there that we can utilize that won't be a significant expense. So from my perspective, I'm okay with the language as is because it says that they're considering other transit center products. And I think as long as we make sure that they fit in with the rest of the look and feel, that it's not cobalt blue and stands out from everything else in the Town Center, then I'm okay.
Commissioner Gallagher?
You're on mute. There we go. I would agree with that. I think what I'm hearing is, and I agree with it, is that anything that's done within this, with the perimeter of what we're doing, should be cohesive to the overall design, whether it's the bus shelter or bike, whatever it is. And so maybe that's something, maybe that's a sentence that needs to be included in the overall proposal. But anything that would be inserted into that area would have to be approved as cohesive to the overall design of the project.
Good point.
Commissioner, Commissioner Mezba? This is Miranda Bates, Shell Planning Director. I would just note that as you discuss this and move towards a motion at some point after the discussion is over, you could think about either the "shall" language that was suggested. You may also consider just noting color as something that we could change and denote and/or mentioning the shelter that is across from and adjacent to City Hall as guidance in making those decisions moving forward.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Everline? You're muted.
Yep. Good thing I didn't say anything important yet. So looking at the packet, and it's page 36 of the PDF or 29 of the Streetscape Plan, the second paragraph for the transit stop says, "No additional products are specified in the Streetscape Plan, but colors and material selection should be consistent with those used elsewhere in Town Center." So to me, that seems to be the language that is necessary to say it's going to fit in with the rest of the development. And so given that, I would recommend that we don't need to add anything. And so given that, I would recommend that we don't need to add anything, any language to the proposal as it is.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I do too. And I saw the same thing that Commissioner Everline mentioned. So I think it's already mentioned there, so I don't see a need to make any changes to it.
Sounds good to me. Thank you again for your detailed review of the, of the plan.
Staff will note, though, that the commission definitely wants to make sure that we're consistent throughout the Town Center with the key design choices that we make. This is a special place, or we think it's going to be anyway.
We want to get it right.
Okay. If that was the only kind of discussion we needed to have, we are now ready for a motion. And the motion would be to recommend Planning Commission Resolution Number LP 21-0002. Go ahead, Ron.
I'll move, I'll move to recommend approval of Planning Commission Resolution Number LP 21-0002.
Seconded.
Motion and seconded, seconded by Commissioner Tuzinski, motioned by Everline. Discussion. Do we want to go around, Robin, on this? We've spent a lot of time doing this. Commissioner Greenfield, you started off.
I think this is a, first of all, a very complete, but secondly, a very beautiful report. I commend Sarah Architects for it and our, and our own Wilsonville planning staff for shepherding such a complete and careful process to produce such a beautiful result. I think it's a durable document, it's a good guideline for what's going to be quite a long, I suspect, quite a long developing project. So I'm prepared at this point to declare my full support for it.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, I, you know, it's already been said, there's been a lot of time spent on this plan. It's a very comprehensive plan, very detailed. It will set the stage, of course, for the city for years to come. There will be, I would expect, while it's being implemented, some maybe minor changes that fit within the whole planning scheme. But from my input here and take, I think it's a plan that we can go with, and I certainly support that.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Willard?
No further comment. I look forward to seeing it play out in real life.
Commissioner Gallagher?
Ditto. I approve.
Commissioner Tuzinski?
I'm very excited to see it play out as someone who just, in the last five years, bought their first house here and plans to spend a lot of their next 25 years in Wilsonville, hope that everything works out great. And I'm thrilled that it's going to take our city in a cultural and business direction that I think that it needs to go.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Everline?
Yeah, I'll say, having been part of the Town Center planning process initially, this is a great addition, and staff continues to do a fantastic job with everything we see.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I started with a task force myself, six, five, five years, whatever it was, seems like a lifetime ago. This is maturing and developing very well, thanks to all the good work that the consultants and the staff have done on it. So we have a motion to recommend Planning Commission Resolution Number LP 21-0002 to the City Council without any changes, as proposed by staff. All in support, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? I didn't hear anyone against. I call against again. No, unanimously approved very well. Excellent. Now, we are going to move to our second public hearing. And am I remembering correctly, I don't need to read the legislative hearing procedure again for the second public hearing, is that correct?
I don't believe so. I believe you read it at the beginning and announced both public hearings tonight, unless the Assistant City Attorney has a differing opinion.
I don't have a different opinion on that, Miranda, I think you're correct.
Thank you.
I am correct that I don't need to read it again, is that what you said, Ryan Adams?
I don't think you need to read it again if you'd like to do that, just to be safe from doing that.
No, I was just making sure everything was copacetic. I would like to open the public hearing for Planning Commission Resolution Number LP 21-0003, the Wilsonville Planning Commission Resolution recommending the Wilsonville City Council adopt text amendment to the Wilsonville Comprehensive Plan Development Code Frog Pond West Master Plan, Villaboa Village Master Plan, and Old Town Neighborhood Plan, adopt a legislative zone map amendment to rezone residential properties in the Old Town Neighborhood to the newly established Old Town Residential Zone, and declare development in planned development residential zones as legal non-conforming to increase the allowance of middle housing in Wilsonville. And with that, we are opening the public hearing at seven o'clock. And I will ask Ms. Bates-Schell to use the project and staff for the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Masbah and Commissioners. My name again for the record is Miranda Bates-Schell, Planning Director for the city of Wilsonville. As all of you know, housing is a critical component to our community, it's a critical component to how each one of us lives our daily lives, and it's a key part of planning. Living in an inclusive community, which the city of Wilsonville has declared itself to be, means we also need to look at inclusive housing and housing opportunities that meet the needs of everyone who lives in our city. It also involves undoing exclusionary policies, looking back at existing policies and seeing where we need to change those. Taking a fresh look is always important as we look at policy, as we've done over the years here in Wilsonville. And the work that's before you tonight is very important, and I know that you have taken that importance to heart, working with us over eight work sessions over the past year to get this work done right and to do it well. One, to make sure that it complies with statewide House Bill 2001 and the new regulations put before us by the state of Oregon. But also, more so hopefully, to really further diversify the housing that's in the city of Wilsonville, moving into the future and meeting the needs of our, both our current and our future residents, your friends, children, neighbors, and to help us to implement the city's recent adopted equitable housing strategic plan and really broaden the opportunities to more people in our community for housing and for homeownership in the future. The packet that's before you tonight is quite large. The size of it very much exemplifies the amount of work you've put into this project, the amount of work that staff and the project team have put into the project, and it exemplifies the monumental nature of the work that's before you this evening. So I want to thank you first for the amount of review you've done. I want to thank all those who have engaged with us over the past year on this project. And with that, I'm going to introduce Daniel Pauly, the project manager for this project, who will give an overview and a presentation of the packet that's in front of you and walk through you through the proposed changes. He'll also introduce the consultant before you. And once those proposed changes are done, there will be another opportunity for, or there will be an opportunity for public comment, as this is a public hearing. So for those who are joining us this evening, the presentation will occur, there will then be questions from the Planning Commission to staff, and then there will be opportunity for citizen input before the Planning Commission discusses the proposal. So with that, Daniel, please go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Miranda, and I echo those thanks. Miranda said a lot of the things that I planned on saying as well, so I certainly echo that. There have been many, both the commission, the council, staff, our consultant team, the community, stakeholders that have been involved in this, and have really contributed to where we are tonight. So let me go ahead, share my screen here, and we'll get started and walk you through this. Also available this evening and assisting are two key members of the consultant team, Kate Rogers with Angelo Planning Group and Joe Dills with Angelo Planning Group. Really appreciate all the effort and professionalism and knowledge that they have brought to this project. So I wanted to step back and review the process and what has occurred over about the last year. Attachment nine, I will note, includes the Planning Commission record, including all the meeting materials to date, and written public comment received up to the publication of the staff report, any comments received since that, which includes a batch sent on Friday, an additional letter sent this morning, also be entered into the record. Those have been sent via email to the Planning Commission, as well as an additional memo from staff that was sent this afternoon that I'll discuss a bit later. I'll also note that the applicant, the review criteria in terms of regulatory compliance is in attachment eight on pages one and two, copies of which are online and otherwise available as requested. So we started with an audit of the existing code to kind of see where compliance issues were, and that led into an effort to really look at design, because we found that kind of making sure as we implement these new requirements and changes that we maintain the look and feel of existing and future neighborhoods. And that's really where a lot of the public involvement came in, and really appreciate everyone that got engaged in that and helped contribute to the current recommendation. Based on that input, we worked on the code and plan amendments that are in front of you and are now here for adoption. Prior to adoption, we have checked back with the community, we see the additional input and have appreciated both what the community and stakeholders have offered. So as I've done with all of these, middle housing is not a term super familiar to a lot of people, so really what that is, what we're talking about in this context as we speak about it, is a range of smaller attached or clustered housing types, typically built at a similar scale, and this is key, similar scale of single-family homes and mixed with single-family homes. Often, it's referred to as minty-middle, largely because it's been minting from the city's neighborhoods since World War II, where prior to that, there were more variety in a lot of these older neighborhoods. To get more into the specifics, under state, state rules and laws and what we're, and how those definitions manifest themselves in the updated code is, are the different types? We're talking duplexes, which are two units on a lot, and then kind of equivalent of a duplex, but with the units detached from each other, is cluster, is a two-unit cluster or cluster housing, as we called it. Then we have a triplex, which is three units on a lot, quadplex, which is four units on a lot, and those all have their detached equivalent. Then we're talking townhouses, which is the most common type of middle housing we see in Wilsonville today. The townhouse term encompasses both what a lot of people probably envision in their minds when they think townhouses in Wilsonville, such as the four to six unit townhouses in the Villaboa neighborhood. But it's also, this definition covers what many have traditionally called attached single families, such as you find around the golf course in the middle of Charbonneau, where you have a common, common wall units that otherwise are fairly traditional single-family homes. That's also covered under the definition of townhouse. Another specific type that's regulated by the state, so included in our definitions, is called cluster housing, which is groups of smaller homes, typically 900 square feet or smaller, that are clustered around a common green space and have some specific rules. So when we're talking middle housings, we're really talking about these specific types of units. So in summary, what the recommended actions are, are to allow middle housing throughout the city's residential areas, establish new design standards for residential development, enable what we call middle housing land divisions, which I'll explain that more, establish the Old Town Residential Zone, and also establish standards and processes for planned developments in all zones to become legal non-conforming. So I will go through each of these in additional detail here in a minute. To get into more of the, more of the mechanics of what we're doing, is these are the actual documents being updated in order to, to do those actions that I listed. First is the comprehensive plan text, then touching all our residential master plan, legislative master plan, including Frog Pond West. I will note that we're not doing anything with Frog Pond East and South, since those master plans are still under development. But Frog Pond West is proposed to be amended, as well as the Villaboa Village Master Plan, the not legislative master plan and neighborhood plan, the Old Town Neighborhood Plan, as well as the Development Code and the zoning map as it pertains to the Old Town Neighborhood. To help make this more digestible, we've, we've broken it down into four categories, which really helps understand what to focus on. There's a big group of what you find in the updates are direct requirements for state compliance with no significant local flexibility, so we pulled those out and have noted them, but haven't talked about them in great detail besides the fact of what the state's requiring and that we're implementing that. Then there's the next category, which is also required by the state without a lot of local flexibility, and these are, though not really direct, this is more things about making middle housing feasible, making sure that the code standards are workable and that they don't inadvertently prohibit the housing that we're required to allow and trying to allow. Category three is an area where there's been a lot more discussion, we spend a lot of our work sessions. These are requirements of state compliance with local flexibility, such as some of those standards around master plan communities that we'll discuss and design standards. The last category are not necessarily for compliance or feasibility as related to middle housing, but are intended to improve the code, are things that essentially while we're working on it, that it's worthwhile fixing. So that's the category four updates. A lot of those resolve around direction we've received on parking and cleaning up some of our standards around parking. A big, I want to emphasize how, how we were, there was no budget or time to do a wholesale change to plans. That really, we focused on honoring past planning efforts, there's been a lot of amazing planning work in the city's residential areas over many years. The scope of the project was really to make refinements that remain consistent with existing plans while, while reflecting the equitable housing strategic plan actions, as well as complying with new state law. If raw changes, there would have been also a broader public engagement process that wasn't within the scope of this project. Again, the overall idea was to comply and refine while remaining consistent with all these previous decisions, from Old Town to Frog Pond to Villaboa and to our general infrastructure, such as our transportation system as well. infrastructure, such as our transportation system as well. So with that, I'll now give some additional explanation of the different recommended actions. First of all, beginning with allowing middle housing, and this ties back to specific state So House Bill 2001 specifically requires cities to allow duplexes on all lots that allow detached single-family homes. They also allow other middle housing, such as triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters to be allowed in areas that allow detached single-family. So what really that in areas means is that where duplexes must be allowed on every lot regardless of size, cities can limit the allowance of these other middle housing types by such things as lot size. So for example, triplexes are only allowed on lots over 5,000 square feet. There's also special considerations for master plan communities that are under development that really came into play for Villabon and Frog Pond West. And also, another big component is that middle housing is not subject to density maximums or has special provisions for density that where there's not ceiling for their development as long as they can fit to meet other citing and design standards. So then recommended, based on those requirements and meeting the city's aspirations and goals as laid out, the specific approaches that are recommended are broken down by some different considerations. First of all, there's the general. This includes the plan development residential zones that apply in much of the city. In these zones, middle housing's already allowed, has been allowed for quite a few years, for decades, and really what the change is acknowledged with specific wording that reflects the state, the different types of middle housing. The largest change here is with process, which I'll touch on more in a bit. In addition to attached middle housing, it also, there's a broad allowance of the detached equivalent, which I referred to earlier, which we call the cluster housing. In Old Town, similarly, middle housing's already allowed as well, but required rezoning for each proposal, which would not be compliant with requirements of House Bill 2001. So we kept the allowance but changed the process again, which I will provide in more detail in a minute as well. We worked during the rulemaking process, we worked with the state to create rules that allow master plan communities like Villabon and Frog Pond West to continue as planned as these already had some housing variety planned into them. So in the end, there's minimal change to Villabon during initial buildout, as it's almost built out. The city must allow for duplexes on any of the unbuilt lots, and redevelopment of any lots in the future would be allowed to middle housing, which is not likely for some time because of the type and newness of the development. Unbuilt portions of Frog Pond West, which currently is about half, but by the time this is implemented, maybe as little as a quarter of the area without land use entitlements, will allow duplexes on any lots and triplexes on corners, some cottage clusters, but not quadplexes. Similarly to any other area in the city, any redevelopment must be allowed for any middle housing type, but that's not likely due to, again, the newness of the development. So that is Frog Pond West for you, which I know we've had a lot of discussion of and appreciate all the commissioners' feedback to get to where we are on those standards. So the process update, which I was referring to, currently much of middle housing would require a public hearing and notice to neighbors in Wilsonville. The state directly requires this to change. The main concept here is that middle housing must be reviewed using the same review process as detached single-family. So really what this means in practice in Wilsonville is if there's no land division, if there's an existing lot or something, that a subdivision has already been established, it only requires a building permit, there's no notice to neighbors or the public. So someone can come pull a building permit for a triplex, just the same as they can pull a building permit for a single-family home. When it comes to land divisions, there's still notice of land divisions, even what we call a middle housing land division, and opportunities for neighbors and the public to comment. But when it's time to build, but in those land divisions, they don't necessarily have to identify what they're going to build on those lots, and when it comes time to build, then it goes through the building permit process just as a single-family home. The next is design standards. This is really an important part of the project, and a big focus was to develop design standards to help the different housing types, middle housing and single-family, the traditional detached single-family blended neighborhoods and maintain the look and feel of current and future Wilsonville neighborhoods. These standards are intended to be direct to meet a purpose while not unduly increasing cost of construction. A key concept also is except for some specific model code provisions defined by the state, the same standards need to apply to detached single-family as well as middle housing. So that really drove how we built the design standards. With that in mind, two new design standards are proposed for single-family detached homes and middle housing throughout the city. The first one is facade variety, which fills off existing variety standards in place in Villabon and Frog Pond that have worked well to avoid monotony or having repetitive design. Next is architectural consistency and interest. The first part of it is a single building needs to have one style, so even if you have a shared walled type unit, that entire structure needs to have a uniform design. For larger building facades, particularly if you get into larger middle housing structures or larger single-family homes, needs variations to create visual interest. A lot of thought and a lot of conversation went into how design standards can help middle housing look similar to existing detached single-family and as previously discussed at Planning Commission, the current proposal strikes the balance of meaningful standards that are not too costly. For middle housing specifically, the city is allowed certain standards, as mentioned, defined by the state, that are specific and vary to each type of middle housing. So they're different for your townhouses than your triplexes or your quadplexes. And these are specifically around entrance orientation, amount of windows, and parking configuration, as kind of parking configuration can vary depending on the type of unit. And so these have been followed the state model code and actually work really well with the city's code, even though they're based on the state model code, because they're the same flavor and type of standards that apply to development in Frog Pond under the residential neighborhood zone, so it works really well with our existing standards. The next item is what we call middle housing land divisions, which is another new, a new concept in the code. This allows a lot to be divided for plating and property transfer purposes, to allow individual units, such as in a triplex or duplex, to be sold to different owners. And then the zoning regulations are applied to the parent lot, so things such as setback or lot coverage are applied to the parent lot, and then those individual units within that parent lot, when they're divided, don't have to meet those standards, would just need to meet any building code property line standards. A key component of this is that it does not change the type of housing unit. So if you divide a duplex down the middle, technically it could meet a definition of a townhouse, but it doesn't change from being a duplex just because you divide it, which for certain types of units really changes the regulations that could apply, so that's a significant point, that once it's developed, even if you divide the land underneath, it remains the type of housing that it was developed as. But the more points about middle housing land divisions is the state requires it to be allowed for new middle housing starting at the middle of next year. Based on feedback both from the Commission Council, as well as through the public review process, and the desire to have more options for homeownership at a lower price point in particular, the city is expanding the allowance to both existing middle housing and accessory dwelling units. We'll note that there is a special expedited review for land divisions associated with new middle housing required by the state, however, for those middle housing land divisions that aren't required by the state, it goes through the existing Class II process with public notice and appeal possibilities, as partitions and other land divisions currently do. The next action would be the Old Town Residential Rezone. This fulfills an action item from a resolution adopting the 2011 Old Town Neighborhood Plan. It also resolves a process compliance issue for middle housing to ensure that middle housing doesn't go through a more complex, cumbersome, time-consuming process to single-family homes in Old Town. It also, as mentioned, it stays true, follows existing Old Town Residential Design Standards, keeps those in place, and only makes any changes that are specifically required by state law in regard to the Old Town Residential Design Standards. Here is a map outlined in yellow are the properties in Old Town that'd be rezoned to this new Old Town Residential Zone. And all is slightly less than 20 acres. So the final action is the plan development, non-conforming process and standards. So this goes, changes, the change also, similarly to the Old Town change, resolves some process compliance issues. Currently, if you receive your plan development approval for a neighborhood back, let's say in 1983, whichever standards were applied in 1983 essentially apply forever. This would change that, that you'd be able to apply current standards to redevelopment in that plan development, and any changes to the plan development would need to come closer into compliance with current standards. So this also applies beyond residential, this applies to industrial and commercial development in the city as well, as noted in the public notice. And so there's a proposed method to make these plan developments legal non-conforming. One is the threshold method. So an example is, for example, the town center, when we totally adopted a new code, virtually every numerical standard changed, then that would meet a threshold where the majority of the standards were changing, so then any existing plan development there would become legal non-conforming. There's also an option for specific council designation as part of a zone map, as part of a development code update or standalone. In this case, part of the package recommended to you is to designate residential developments existing to be legal non-conforming, which would enable middle housing development as well as meeting, as any redevelopment meeting current standards. One component of this also is that middle housing is exempt from any density maximums designated in any of the previous plan development, residential plan developments. Again, this is a state compliance issue on that point. So that is the end of kind of explanation of the actions we're taking. I want to get more into why we're taking the actions. What are the desired project outcomes? I alluded to some of these. I want to go through these and explain how these are being met. I'm pleased to report that we've reached these desired outcomes for the most part, and it really made good progress towards these. These were discussed with and really supported by the council earlier this year. So first is, and these include having a thoughtful, inclusive built environment, compliance with the new state laws, meeting housing needs for a diverse community, having impactful public outreach, infrastructure to support middle housing, having usable, meaningful standards, and minimizing parking congestion. So to support thoughtful, inclusive built environments, the project thoughtfully considered the new, particularly the new citing and design standards to ensure they contribute positively to the look and feel of Wilsonville. Also, the standards incorporated diverse viewpoints and their needs, including quite a bit of input from the Latinx community through the outreach that we did. Next, to comply with House Bill 2001 and the related administrative rules adopted by the state, the city completed the audit mentioned and made the necessary changes identified in the audit. DLCD staff has reviewed the proposal that we've met with them. They didn't have any substantial concerns, therefore they chose not to provide written comments. However, I will mention the state's partnership has been valuable, including the funding of $95,000 in grant money that we received to support the project. To increase, next is to increase the opportunity for the development of more middle housing to help meet the housing needs of our diverse community. The project removes regulatory barriers, allowing more opportunity for development of diverse housing. The city recognizes that this is one aspect of a much broader effort to meet housing needs. It is one of a number of action items identified last year in the Equil Housing Strategic Plan and fulfills one of those action items, one of the priority action items in that To include public outreach to inform middle housing design, particularly from historically marginalized communities of color, was another desired outcome. So to do this, we targeted, we had a number of targeted community meetings, we shared information widely, had a lot of online engagement through the Let's Talk Wilsonville Engagement portal. We also did this Latinx outreach, which is of special note, we partnered with Central Cultural of Washington County with Supportive and Metro Grant, which included a series of Saturday afternoon focus groups, as well as Spanish language surveys. And the project team was mindful to ensure this input was received from all, input received from the Latinx community and all the sources had meaningful project impact, and really appreciate how all of that came together to really inform the project. You'll find attachment seven provides information about all the outreach efforts and specific impacts on the package that is before the commission tonight. Jumping into infrastructure, to update the infrastructure plans, the desired outcome was to update infrastructure plans as needed to support additional middle housing production in the city. So we worked with consultants that worked with our infrastructure plan previously to do sensitivity analyses. The kind of the big picture, generally the systems can handle the incremental changes anticipated with the changes. You can see the full analyses in attachment six. I will note that additional study is needed for Frog Pond as part of the East and South Master Plan that's already scoped and funded and in progress. The big picture there is with additional, potential additional middle housing in Frog Pond West, that eats up more of the infrastructure capacity in that sector of the city, so that needs to be thought through as part of the Frog Pond East and South master planning. But there's sufficient infrastructure to accommodate anything that would happen in Frog Pond West. Next, usable standards. The objective here was to ensure we create standards that have a high likelihood of use, and to do this, we really love to use this lens, staff and the consultant team, as well as encourage the commission and city council to have this lens. We also met with developers and got their feedback on key components to make sure what we're doing is usable. And finally, minimizing parking. And finally, minimizing parking congestion. Uh, so there's substantial efforts uh to evaluate and update parking strategies and policies. Uh, parking was a major focus of the online survey. Uh, and one thing we're, we're dealing with are some constraints. Uh, there is limited land, parking takes up land and that land, uh, competes with other needs. The interesting part of the online survey that you can find also in the outreach report is that we, we really asked, so where does additional parking stand with other desired things such as backyards, space between houses, uh, open space, things like that? So it was really interesting to see how that felt, fell, it really fell kind of in the middle. Um, so that, that helped inform uh any actions that we took. Uh, there's also a state requirement that uh cities can require no more than one space per unit, uh, and that's consistent with what current code is, and so we're continuing to expand that. Uh, we'll know that, you know, if you look back at development, most development ends up building above that minimum, uh, but it is, is a limit put on uh from the, from the state. So really, with, understanding those constraints, we looked at opportunities, uh, which included making, make parking spaces more usable and accessible, making sure that they're correct size, that there's not, uh, that there's not obvious conflicts such as storage or trash containers and things like that. Make sure that if it isn't a garage, that there's specific requirements that that garage be kept clear and used for parking. Uh, also encouraging additional parking as appropriate in constrained areas. Uh, this includes encouraging for units over 1,000, be encouraging, but we can't require, but we can still encourage and make our development partners aware that a preference of two spaces per, per unit for those larger, for those larger developments. Another component of parking is, uh, is visitor parking options. Uh, outreach pointed to a desire to have visitor parking particularly, and to do that, we need to designate a visitor, otherwise it becomes extra vehicle parking. Uh, the option that really came to the forefront is if 10% or more of lots do not have adjacent on-street parking in a development, uh, that the developer has an option to add uh is parking, park additional parking uh within, that must be within 200 feet of a lot and be owned and maintained by an HOA. But really where the land for that comes from is incentive uh by trade-offs, uh, by slightly reducing lot size and open space to enable uh additional space for a shared visitor parking. So wrapping up now, uh, you can find our compliance findings in attachment eight. Uh, and really, in, in summary, uh, the proposal is compliance with new and existing state regulations, metro regulations, and local all season regulations. Uh, and that really leads into the staff recommendation of approval of the city council of all these different components that we've discussed. Uh, I will note, uh, as you received this afternoon, and I'll pull it up since I don't know that everyone got an opportunity to go through it, is a memo with, uh, with a number of minor edits. Uh, let me go ahead and share this. And let me just step through these quickly. The first one uh is the comment, the comment pointed out to address that there were some additional numbers still in from old housing numbers uh that weren't really applicable anymore. So it's just struck those lang, that language from the latter half of this comprehensive plan paragraph. Uh, there was a comment that, there was an undefined reference to specified middle housing without specifying what that middle housing was. Uh, language clarifies that, that really pointing to the development code, uh, this really one leads, points out that when we're talking about density ranges in the comprehensive plan that uh, that middle housing as well as ADUs are either exempt uh from, from density or in the case of townhouses and cottage clusters, some, some type specific density limits. And then noting that that's further defined and delineated in the standards for each of the zoning districts. Uh, there was, uh, in a longer standard, uh, a comment was about, there seemed to be a missing word. Uh, so we just clarified in this case that we're talking about single-family residential development. This is referring, we have a couple of single-family subdivisions that are actually in commercial and industrial zones, it's part of larger plan developments, and just noting that these developments are subject to uh allowing middle housing and updated standards. Uh, and finally, there is a new standard requiring storage for, for waste containers uh outside of the parking area for the garage. And that just clarifies that, to clarify that we're not talking about trash can you go and buy at Home Depot, they were specifically talking about uh those provided by the franchise hauler and, which not only includes solid waste recycling, but also yard debris or other things that may come up. So with that, uh, I also want to provide opportunities for Joe and Kate to add any comments or anything odd from their perspective that they think the, the commission would,[985.54]
There are limitations to that. And so we have this principle called preemption. And preemption says that if a state, in our case, right, if the state of Oregon adopts a law, if the legislature adopts a law, then a city does not have the authority to override that law. That's black letter law. That is well established. You just simply don't. So here, textually, it's very clear. If the city, in this case, does not adopt this updated ordinance that Dan has worked on and Kate and Joe have worked on, then L T D C applies their own model ordinance. And so really, you either have the choice to adopt what we've worked on or direct revisions to that, or L T D C's model ordinance will take effect. And so I think, while I understand the frustrations of our citizens saying, hey, you know, local ordinances should be local, well, when the state acts and adopts a law, then they take it out of your hand. And so the fix isn't necessarily to pick a bone with the Planning Commission or the City Council. To the extent that our citizens have concerns, they need to address those at the ballot box, or they need to take it to the legislature. That's really, that's the issue. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Commissioner Tsitsinski, is that adequate?
Yes. But I guess, too, what I'm a little bit looking for, and this is just purely for the citizens that maybe have some questions about, okay, that sounds really great, but like, what will actually happen if we do not adopt these rules? What would happen to our city?
Correct. So I'll let Dan go into the model ordinance, if you'd like, but really, the model sort of applies. So we essentially give up, you would give up, or the city would give up its right to adopt its own ordinances, and the state would take over and adopt, you know, whatever the model rule is that L T D C came up with. That's as simply as I can put it. And if Dan wants to get into the specifics of what that actually says, I'm happy to let him do that.
Yeah, just briefly, so really, the, what the rules do allow is the city to do some tailoring to specific circumstances. Like we talked about, we did some tailoring for Old Town, for Frog Pond, for Villebois. If we just ignored it, then the state model code would come in effect and would apply blanket throughout the city. That would include more broad allowance during initial build-out in Frog Pond West, for example. It would limit the design standards. They'd also implement some design standards that may not work that well in Wilsonville context. So, you know, there's a lot of components that are the same either way, but it does allow us to tailor it to Wilsonville where allowed.
And Commissioner Tsitsinski, this is Miranda Bechel, Planning Director with the city. I would just also note briefly that in terms of process-wise, what that would look like is they could come in, I guess, and mandate the changes to our code. But prior to that, what would happen would be that we just couldn't implement any of the standards that were contrary to the state code. So even if our code were to say, this is, you know, a duplex isn't allowed on this lot, or it has to go through the Development Review Board process, those are things that we can no longer actually require of an applicant based on the new state law. And so essentially, we would just not actually process it in that manner or apply those standards because they're contrary to state law. If we were to do that, then that would put us in a risky legal situation where the state could essentially take us to court. So that's some of the implications involved with that, and how it would actually play out in kind of real time.
Is that answering your question, Commissioner?
Yes, that's very helpful. I just, I kind of understood what's going on, but I think based on some of the comments we got via email, that's very helpful just to have on record for our citizens, just to know kind of what we're up against here, even if it's not what everybody necessarily, throughout the entire city, wants. It's just kind of what we're facing.
Well, and home rule, I'm very happy that Assistant Corps Counsel mentioned home rule. Home rule, we have that in our homes. When you build a house, the electric code says every four feet you need to have an outlet. It doesn't say exactly where it should be, but every four feet you need to have an outlet. Otherwise, you won't get an occupancy permit. I mean, that's the upshot there. But we have these kinds of codes all over the place where you would think that if I'm building my own house, I should be able to build it be sure where I want. Well, no, because it can endanger others and so forth. Now, that's health and safety, but the same kind of health and safety, the state's policing power is what ends up being the planning kind of tools that tells people where to build them and how to build them, and all the rest of this. So that's what is at stake here. And saying, I want to do whatever I want to do, doesn't work anywhere. You can't drive that way. You can't build a house that way. You can't live that way. So.
And I'll note, Commissioner, look, you know, the policy is set by the legislature, right? This is what they're doing. And so to the extent, you know, we've seen this happen before. In 2004, the voters adopted Measure 37, right? And that was significantly curtailed, I believe it was 2007, by Measure 49. So to the extent that this doesn't work, there are legislative fixes to it, but the state recognized the problem and is doing its best to address that problem. So, you know, just like the United States, we are an experiment democracy here, and you folks have a job to do, you know, and that's adopting a code that's compliant with H B two zero zero one. And Dan's done a great job, along with our consultants, of making that happen.
Very good. Any other questions before we open public testimony?
I would note if I could add one other change that, and I apologize, I had some formatting issues with Attachment Two, which is the Frog Pond West Master Plan, and it ended up going through a lot of versions, like converting it to a PDF didn't work. So in the end, through all of that, I had gone through and struck out all the references to the expanded 10% requirement. It was just noted that on page 13, there is one, in the eventual version that worked to PDF, it's still in there somehow. So just note that that will need to be struck as well.
Which page is that?
That is page 13 of Attachment Two. Starting with the word, this expands the previous limited requirement for large, which required 10% of units. The 10% requirement has been expanded to include all sub-districts. So that language about it being expanded to include all sub-districts would be struck.
Okay. And this is the only place that 10% snuck through, you're sure about it?
Yeah. None else has been noted, and I did go through and remove them.
We spent a meeting on this, Dan. Okay. Very good. If there isn't any other comments, I would like to go to the public testimony if we can.
I'll be coming in to council chambers, so give me a moment.
How much of a moment do you need?
Nah, you can start. I'll be there, so.
Well, I'm gonna go over, I'm gonna go over the reminder, not the long script, but the reminder, okay. I would like to open public testimony on Planning Commission Resolution Number L P twenty-one zero 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 three. And as a general reminder to those who may want to be providing public testimony, you will be unmuted and asked if you wish to testify. You can inform the staff that you wish to testify, and you can start talking when you're unmuted. If you have emailed comments, please state that for the record, and staff will read those comments into the record. You need to fill out a testimony card, either physically or via email. And you need to testify for the record what your name and address is. If you don't want to say that publicly, then you can provide it on the card, on the testimony card for the record and not say it on the mic. And after you finish your testimony, commissioners may want to ask questions from you to clarify things. I would like to open our testimony at, it is seven fifty-four. Do we have?
Yes, thank you, Chair Masbah. We do have members of the public who wish to testify. We're confirming who all would like to do that, but we can start with those present at City Hall. And I would go ahead and call forward Dorothy Von Eggers to testify.
Are we, are we doing a time limit, or do we have enough people that we need time limits?
At this point, we have maybe only one and possibly up to five or six. So I would put that at the discretion of the commission.
Hi, my name is.
Commissioners, do you want time limits or two? Do we? I see a couple of shaking heads or nodding heads. Okay, let's do the three-minute time limit.
Okay. Hi, my name is Dorothy Von Eggers. I was on the original 2014 task force, working with the Angelo Planning Group. I was the, on the HOA. I live in the Landover neighborhood, and we are surrounded by Frog Pond West, East and South. The issue back then was high-density housing versus medium and low. I was going to talk a little bit about that, but then after hearing that your middle housing is exempt from any density maximums, I'm not sure what that exactly means. I know the issue back in 2014 and beyond, there were hours and hours of verbal testimony and pages and pages of testimony, mostly against high-density housing. These proposed changes were reviewed at nauseam and went on for years. I don't think there's any need to recreate the wheel. So if it's not, again, I don't understand what the middle housing exempt from high-density maximums, but if we can pull that into the testimony, I would like to request that all the testimony regarding high-density housing be entered into the record for the middle housing project. Again, that might be a moot point because of this thing that it's exempt. My next issue is in regards to the different housing projects, and I would like to, when you do vote, I would like to request that you vote separately, that you vote on Villebois separately, you vote on Frog Pond West separately, and you vote on Old Town separately. Don't group them in as one and say, this is the decision we've made, and this encompasses all three. I'd like them to be voted on separately. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commissioner, the commissioner have any questions from the speaker? I don't see any hands up.
All right.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, Chair Masbah, I think we're going to, we only have a few people on the Zoom call, a couple people on the Zoom call. I think we're going to go ahead and unmute each one and confirm with them verbally if they wish to speak, only because we're not sure if they, how familiar they are with the Zoom technology.
Okay.
So, Michelle Sandlin, would you like to testify?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Hi, thank you. I wasn't counting on speaking, but after listening to all this, I do have one question. On the minimized parking congestion, when it mentions opportunities, make parking spaces more usable and accessible, is usable and accessible defined? Is that in detail defined, excuse me, is that defined in detail? And also additional parking in appropriate constrained areas? Is that defined as to what constitutes constrained and what constitutes appropriate? Oh my gosh, did I stump you?
No, you didn't. I'm just trying to see if staff will chime in. Do we want to answer these as we go along, Ms. Bechel, or do we want to wait and address them?
Since we already moved from, I think, one, we've already gone through and started taking testimony, so I would say let's take all the testimony and then staff whatever questions the commission has for staff based on that. And if you'd like the different questions posed by the citizens answered, then we can do that after all the comments are received.
Okay, thank you. I think it's important to know what that, what do those terms mean.
Very well. Thank you for that comment. We will hear from staff at the end of the comments.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Sparkle Anderson on the Zoom call, and we're going to ask her if she'd like to unmute and provide any testimony. Sparkle Anderson, are you able to hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, but I didn't really want to talk. I'm just listening.
Okay, you absolutely do not have to provide testimony if you do not wish, but we wanted to make sure we gave you the opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for participating.
You have a good evening.
I'm gonna just double check.
I'm just gonna double check the hallway because we had other folks here, and I just want to make sure we don't have anybody else waiting their turn, and then we can close the testimony after that.
I can't tell who he's talking to. Like, I can hear him, but I don't know.
All right, it's clear. That, I believe, concludes our public testimony.
Very good. We will close the, well, no, I don't want to close the public hearing yet because the answer to this question needs to be part of the record. So why don't we ask staff to address Michelle Sandlin's question about the specifics of parking maximization?
So this is Dan. So that is very much defined in quite a bit of specifics. That is one area that I use discretion, not to go into a lot of detail in during this hearing for time's sake. But, for example, usable and accessible is defined by such things as specific size. There is a defined size of nine by eighteen. Defined in the code, it's also defined by such things as, it needs to be clear where you can get into it. It needs to not conflict with walkways, conflict with storage areas. Usable and accessible means having a requirement that if it's in a garage, that there is a covenant essentially that says you can't store stuff in there long-term, that you have to keep it clear for parking. So there's a number of very specific items, and that is the intent to have it defined. As it, the constraint that really means, the main portion of that is where you do not have on-street parking, and that's defined in the code of where that applies. So I use generic terms there for brevity's sake, but it is defined in specificity in the code.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I think I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Chair Masbah, can I, Chair Masbah?
Yes.
Can, right before you do that, I'm hoping that I could actually ask Mr. Pauli to address the question from Ms. Von Eggers about the, what middle housing is exempt from any density maximums? What does that mean? And I think I would like you to actually speak to the lot standards in Frog Pond West and how that intersects with that density exemption.
So the lot standard is really the key. One key thing that we did keep the same in Frog Pond West is the lots. The lot sizes are the same, the number of lots is the same. So what, really, how that plays out in like a Frog Pond West is that, the envelope, if you will, that you can build, that you can build to remains the same. So whether that's, you know, that such thing as setbacks, lot coverage, all remain the same. Number of lots remain the same. Minimum lot size for the different sub-districts remains the same. Where that comes into play is in that same envelope that maybe previously was a single-family house, that could be a duplex within that same footprint. But also, the design standards are written as such that that duplex would have a similar look and feel to the single family that was envisioned. So had the overall look and feel of Frog Pond and the, if you will, the perceived density from an urban design standpoint would be substantially the same. What happens within those walls of the buildings is really where the exemption is, that you can add additional units within that envelope without being restricted.
Thank you, Mr. Pauli.
I have a follow-up question. Follow-up question, Dan. And thank you, Miranda, for bringing this up because I had forgotten it. The question was, what does it do to density, units per acre? And if I remember correctly, the goal was to bring up the density in Frog Pond from what it is now, or what is going to be at full development, to something higher. What were those numbers?
So this gets back, so briefly, there were some options. So this gets back to what we briefly talked about, is whether the model code applies or whether we tailor it specific to Frog Pond. So for Frog Pond, we have the option of either allowing some level of additional density or defaulting to the base standards, which would actually be even more density. So, for example, if we didn't essentially up the density from about six and a half units per acre to eight units per acre, then quadplexes would be allowed on any lot, which default would be a much bigger increase than to eight units per acre. It's kind of interesting math, and can be a little convoluted and confusing, but we chose this method, this path, because it's most consistent with the Frog Pond Master Plan. That was the intent here, is we chose the path that's most.
Thank you for that.
Consistent with the Frog Pond Master Plan and the density that was established there, looking again to stay true to that previous planning effort as much as the regulations and current policy direction allow.
Now, those were the numbers I was looking for. You're going to get to eight from six and a half in order not to get way over eight, which would be the default.
Correct.
That would be imposed on it. Very good. Thank you. And the number of lots are the same.
Correct. And as a clarification, I think I would like to add, to confirm what Chair Masbah just said, which is that the lots stay the same in terms of the overall number of lots that are allowed to be subdivided when we develop. The number of lots don't change. And so the state law is exempting middle housing from density. Like, what that means at a base level is that if we're applying a density maximum on a development project that comes in front of us, we can't basically say to the middle housing applicant that they're straight up denied just because they go over that density. So that's what that state law provision at its base level means. What still applies, though, are things, as Dan mentioned, is all the setbacks, lot coverage, the fact that only certain housing types can go on certain lots of certain sizes. So there's going to be other things that inherently mean that the density doesn't just now allow, you know, four, five, six, seven times the amount of density that was allowed before. It's all, everything's going to operate within that same density envelope. We just can't say it has to be a single-family house. If it came to us as a duplex, then we have to allow that.
And so, in an operative sense, essentially, it ended up being quite a simple change to the code. Basically, what we did for Frog Pond is where there was a number of units range for each sub-district, we changed that to a number of lots range. So we just changed units to lots, and we ended up being able to meet that eight units per acre using that mechanism and while staying as close as we can to the Frog Pond West Master Plan.
Very good. I think we are done cleaning up the answers to the comments we received. Is it a good time to close the public hearing now, Ms. Bechel?
I believe so. Thank you, Chair Masbah.
Yes, I will declare the public hearing closed at, I have, eight eleven. Okay. Commissioners, discussion? Who wants to start? Or are you, go ahead, Commissioner Greenfield.
There was a question raised in the, by a member of the public regarding breaking out the separate pieces of the resolution for individual adoption. And I'm wondering, that is, the updates to the comprehensive plan, Frog Pond West Master Plan, and so forth and so forth. And my question is whether that is actually even feasible. Seems to me that we approached this, and we needed to approach this in a fairly holistic way. We have to maintain consistency across the city in our, in the zoning approach that we have and in the accommodation of this middle housing requirement and so forth. I'm doubtful that it's possible to break out more precisely the impacts on the various documents that were, the planning documents that exist. Am I correct about that?
Assistant Corps Counsel, your counsel.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Greenfield. I think you keep it together, and I don't think there's any issue with that. I mean, to the extent that you would like to break it apart, I don't see any issue with that either, but I think it's cleaner to keep it together. Brandt, do you have any comments on that?
I would add that historically, we have always kept them together because it ties the intent to the changes. And so if later we are seeking clarity on a change in a document or what that code standard meant, we can track the history of it, of initial adoption, and then how it changes through resolution. And so for this, it would all be tied to this specific resolution, and we would know it was tied to the House Bill 2001 and middle housing compliance and equitable housing strategic plan updates for middle housing. So you would keep that intent together. I also think it would be very challenging with the record. Because all of these things are intertwined, the changes to the comprehensive plan relate to the changes in the development code, which relate to design standards. The Old Town plan is tied to the rezoning, which is then also tied to the development code. All of those things interrelate, and the standards correlate with one another to allow what we're trying to allow. And the testimony we've received is all related in relationship to how those function. And so it would be very difficult to tease apart public input and the record into those various buckets. You could duplicate the record. You could duplicate the record, so we could, you could duplicate the record and have multiple motions, but in effect, you'd end up with the same thing.
I don't know how you would have multiple motions unless we have three or four different resolution numbers. And we have had a public hearing on this resolution, and we wouldn't have a public hearing on those new resolutions. So I, I don't know how we could do a separate kind of vote on each one of these.
I mean, that's the only way we would be able to do it, is to return all of those.
Everline is talking.
Sorry, Sir Mesba. I, I think, Chair Mesba, what we would have to do is we would have to continue the public hearing and, and have new resolutions. In my mind, that would only be something we would want to do if the commission felt that there was a need to do that. My personal opinion is, my, my vote would be the same regardless of whether they were separate or together. So it would only be if there was going to be a change in one that would impact, that wouldn't impact the rest.
Correct. Correct. In other words, if we, you know, theoretically say no to, you know, Old Town, it's still not meeting the state mandate. I mean, the whole city is down for Old Town if we reject Old Town. We would have to accept all of these because the city as a whole needs to come to the standard that it needs to in order to be compliant. I have a, I have the same feeling as you, Commissioner Everline. It seems Commissioner Greenfield is of the same thinking. I don't know, any of the other commissioners, do you, are you following differently? Or are you, are we all of the same mind? We're going to keep this together? I see a lot of nodding, eh?
Together.
Okay. There is a consensus, it seems. Very well. But, aside from that, is there any need for other discussion on some of the other issues that have come up? Or should we entertain a motion on the second? Commissioner Greenfield?
I move to adopt Resolution LP 21-0003, recommending adoption of updates to the comprehensive plan, Frog Pond West master plan, Village master plan, Old Town neighborhood plan, and the development code, and legislative zone map amendments in Old Town to the new Old Town residential zone.
Thank you for that. It was moved and seconded. Now, Commissioner Everline?
Yeah, I, I would like to, I'd like to recommend that we, we have some refinements we need to add to, to the motion. So, Mr. Pauli's memo from May 29, 2021 needs to be included, and the removal of the 10% requirement expansion to all sub-districts on page 13 of Attachment 2 needs to be added to the motion as well.
Very well. Thank you for that.
That's fine with me as the maker of the motion. I understand that that could be the intent of my motion.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Greenfield. Hold on, I had, Ms. Pinyard had her hand up.
Commissioner Everline addressed my question and query. So, we're good, thank you.
We'll, we'll get there. Thank you for that. Okay. So, Commissioner Greenfield, are you saying that the amendment is a friendly amendment?
No, I'm saying that that is within the scope of my understanding of the motion as I made it.
Okay. My question from Mr. Adams is, do I need a motion and approval of the amendment, or don't I?
Yes, let's do a motion approval of the amendment to make it cleaner for the record.
Okay. So we have a, an amendment proposed by Commissioner Everline. Is there a second on that amendment?
Second.
Commissioner Gallagher has, has seconded it. Is there any discussion? I don't see anybody jumping at that. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Very well. In unanimous vote, the amendment is now part of the motion. Is there any discussion on the main motion? And the main motion is approving Planning Commission Resolution LP 21-0003 as amended. Any discussion? No? You got tired of the boy. This is a heartbreak, heartbreak to Dan Pauli, with all the work that he did.
Eight work sessions.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Bruises.
Thank you.
Ms. Pinyard, grab your hand up again.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to confirm the second on the main motion. I understood, I had, I think it was read as Heberline, but I thought wrong, Commissioner Everline was the one that just had the changes, so I just wanted to confirm who, who seconded the main motion.
I did.
Oh, that was on the amendment, right?
No, I did the other two.
Oh, you did, great. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, there we go. Thank you. It gets messy. And we don't want minutes where I'm, that I'm
I'm awake, I'm awake. Promise.
Very good. We have worked hard on this, and we have tried to thread the needle, it seems to me. And I can understand that most of the interested parties, the public, did not have the, had better things to do perhaps on those evenings than to follow all eight work sessions that we, we took to build this and, and debate that ran into it. But we did our best to make sure that the flavor is very much Wilsonville flavor. Commissioner Gallagher?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the comments that were made about distinguishing between what the state is requiring and what our options are with home rule. You know, this, this has been, this has been mentioned, this has been murmured, this has been rumored. A lot of the dissatisfaction that I know I've heard about, I think has come from the fact that I don't think people really understand that, that there was, there was an option here. And that it isn't something that we're just doing arbitrarily because we decided we could. And I think that discussion was really helpful, and is something maybe we need to make the public more aware of. In the most simple terms, that it's either doing it according to state ruling, or we lose our option to have any input at all and, and be overridden. And I, I think the public would benefit from having that information.
Yes. And most people, I mean, even lawyers who have not worked in administrative law, don't have the appreciation for the ins and outs. And that's why I wanted Ryan Adams to speak to this, because most citizens wouldn't, wouldn't have any reason to know much about it. And we need to educate our citizens more about what we can and what we cannot do. Any other comments? I'm getting ready to ask for votes. Go ahead, Commissioner Everline.
Yeah, just really quickly, I do want to thank, I want to thank staff and, and to the planning group for all their work on this. It's, it's been a grind. I would say that so far has been the hardest thing that we've gone through, or that I've gone through as, as part of the commission. And it's, it's a lot of tough work, but I think we did a good job in the long run and, and tried our best to meet the needs of, of all of the constituents in the city.
I thought for a moment there you were thanking the staff for their tough work. It sounded like you were congratulating the commission for its tough work.
No.
Everybody, it's, it's been a grind for everybody, I would guess. So, thank you to everybody for, for sticking through.
Yeah. I just want to add to that. I, I was invited on to the commission sort of baptism under fire. I remember Dan, Dan taking my side and saying, hey, listen, if you want, I can spend extra time with you and bring you up to speed on what is middle housing, which he did, by the way. So I, I just want to compliment the staff. You've done an extraordinary job under very difficult circumstances. So thank you.
Indeed. And, you know, having been on the other side as staff, every time I looked at the agenda and saw some of this work product coming back up, I could see in the background, staff running around like headless chickens, which I used to do, in order to prepare this stuff. I mean, it doesn't come out of a printer, it's all by itself. You have to put time and effort and thought into it. It is really hard. And I want to congratulate staff and, and the consultants for a magnificent job, really. And for being responsive to the kinds of concerns that, that commission brought up. I mean, on every issue, we really had a consultative process that tried to get to the root of the issue, and how can we make this work so that it can be least disruptive and best fit? And that is not usually easy to do, day in and day out. And I think you've achieved that, and I want to congratulate you for that. So that, now that we have congratulated one another adequately, let's take a vote on this amended resolution. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Ryan Everline, you, you had a delay. Were you opposed, or?
No, please, no. I'm in favor.
Unanimous approval.
Thank you very much. That closes that portion of our agenda. And just as you thought you were done, go ahead.
Yeah, might I move that we take a five-minute break?
Yes, thank you. Have a good one.
I second that feeling. Very good. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Five-minute break. We will have a, a temporary break, and we'll be back at 8:30.
Chair Mesba, you're going to have to say that again now that the lights just went off and on.
I call the planning, Wilsonville Planning Commission meeting back into session, and it's 8:33 PM. Our next agenda item is work session, work session item, Urban Forest Management Plan. And we're going to have a presentation, but I will have Ms. Bechel introduce the subject and the staff's presentation.
Absolutely. I would be happy to do that, Chair Mesba and commissioners. And you moved so quickly to a five-minute recess, but I didn't get to add on my congratulations. I would actually like to do that very briefly before we head into the work session, only because it really was an amazing feat of work in a way that we haven't done before. We've had other big projects. Town Center was a lot of work over two years, but it wasn't eight work sessions in 10 months on very, very detailed code provisions. And I just personally wanted to acknowledge the amazing effort of Mr. Pauli, who kept the project on track and consistent with state code. We finished on time, and I believe on budget, or close enough. The whole team does deserve congratulations, and the Planning Commission, all of you. I know you've heard me and the prior planning director wax on about the amazing volunteers that we have in the city of Wilsonville, and I would like to do that one more time. The seven of you have contributed countless hours, as you always do to planning commission meetings, but in particular to this item. And taking the time to not just do the model code, to not just do, yep, that's what we got to do, to be in compliance with the state, but to really look critically at our codes and to do what makes Wilsonville stand out, which is good planning, thoughtful planning, looking at, taking a critical look and looking at how it's best suited and best fit to Wilsonville. And that's really important and really invaluable to the community and to the residents. And so I just wanted to extend my gratitude and thank you for doing that and being on this ride with us. So with that, I won't make Mr. Rappold wait any longer. He, as you'll recall, has been working on the urban forest
Draft goals, actions, targets, and monitoring methods, which we'll highlight and discuss tonight. This planning effort, like I mentioned, led to the following vision, goals, and actions that are in draft form at this stage. An overarching goal for Wilsonville's urban forest is to increase tree canopy cover. So that's the leaf area covering the city when viewed from above. And we used the American Forest Tree Equity Score tool to find that Wilsonville is covered by 30% tree canopy, and that's across public and private lands. And the overall tree equity score for Wilsonville is 77 out of 100. For all census blocks in the city to at least be at a score of 75 for the tree equity score, it would require 27,000 trees to be planted, and that would increase the canopy from 30% to 36%, or 36 by 46, which is across the 25-year planning horizon. And we can talk more about the tree equity score, but many communities establishing urban forest management plans create a canopy goal, which drives a lot of policy, planting, preservation, maintenance, outreach. And so this overarching goal that we were able to create for Wilsonville will help lay the groundwork for implementing actions. And the tree equity score, just in short, covers canopy cover, population density, income, employment, surface temperature, race, age, and health. So this is a starting point from which we can establish a vision, the goals, and the actions. Increasing tree canopy should be guided by a vision. For Wilsonville, the following vision statement on this slide describes how not only will the canopy cover increase, it will be supported by the city and residents, and the canopy cover will be sustainable and distributed equitably across the city. To achieve this vision and the 36 by 46, a series of goals were established. So on this slide, we see the goal theme in the left column, followed by the goal statement. And goals range from policy and staffing to data and plans, along with enhanced community engagement and urban forest management. And keep in mind, these themes or these goals that were identified was completed by doing those six planning elements and doing the urban forest audit. So the audit consists of 11 categories of urban forest management and 130 supporting elements. So through this gap analysis process, we identified the key areas where we should sustain efforts and also increase and improve efforts in order to have a comprehensive urban forest management program. So those five themes or goals are presented here on this slide. The next few slides provide the goal theme on the left, followed by the series of supporting actions, and we paraphrase these actions for the presentation. So on this slide, you see tree policy actions relating to canopy goals, storm and disaster management, and manuals or guides for proper tree maintenance, providing the information for adjacent property owners to properly maintain trees using industry best standard, industry standards and best practices. Capacity training and authority actions consist of a working group to oversee plan implementation, maintaining certifications, and adhering to industry standards and best practices, and continued training of staff and private property owners on these standards and practices. To measure improvements and adapt strategies over time, it's important to continually evaluate the urban forest through assessments and plans. And so these actions consist of inventories, planting plans, audits or gap analyses, you know, following up on the urban forest audit that we completed for the management plan, as well as evaluating ecosystem benefits of those inventoried and assessed trees in order to measure progress and also raise awareness about the benefits of the urban forest in Wilsonville. Community engagement should include consistent messaging, education, partnerships, volunteer events, recognition, as well as maintaining Arbor Day's Tree City USA status. So that includes reporting on the urban forestry efforts and also conducting an Arbor Day event. So that just summarizes some of the community engagement actions. But you see, out of all of the actions and the goals, community engagement is a high priority in order for that community-wide commitment that was stated early in this presentation. Lastly, we have green asset management, or termed urban forest management. And that consists of planning and managing existing and future pests and diseases, risk tree management and routine tree maintenance, and strategic tree planting aligned with canopy goals. And so we view the urban forest as infrastructure and a vital asset to communities, and proper management of this asset requires long-term planning and management to prevent future and existing pests and diseases and to be, to create and grow a resilient urban forest. And this also aligns with that 36 by 46 canopy goal. You need to preserve the canopy you have, but also properly maintain and also plant new trees to achieve canopy goals. So these goals and actions apply citywide, but there are specific strategies to be implemented for the focus areas of Town Center and Charbonneau. So the following slide provides an overview of these findings. As Carrie mentioned, there was an inventory completed in 2020, specific to these focus areas, where International Society of Aboraculture Certified Arborists inventoried trees using software by plotting the tree, assessing the condition and size, identifying the species, noting the maintenance need, or other observations like defects in the tree or sidewalk upheavals and other attributes completed as part of the inventory. So just for your, the flow of the presentation provided the project approach, brief overview of the goals or the vision, goals, and actions. And then we're going to have two slides on the findings from the focus areas, and then we'll get into the summary and next steps, followed by the open discussion. So this slide provides an overview of the findings from that 2020 inventory. And this inventory was conducted for Town Center as part of the management plan project. In Town Center, we see, looking at the inventory data, less than ideal distribution of tree sizes. So we see that for Town Center, a lot of the trees are in the 12 to 18-inch class, whereas more trees in the smaller-sized classes should be in the inventory so that when larger mature trees decline, there are new trees to expand the canopy and associated benefits. We also see a slight overabundance of red maples and calorie pears. And the majority of the tree population is in good condition, though, which was determined by the certified arborist. And this information is crucial to development and redevelopment plans in Town Center. Trees that must be removed should be carefully evaluated based on their species, condition, longevity, and function. Trees should also be preserved where feasible, and if the trees are removed, an appropriate replacement species should be considered based on the location. And you should also consider the timing as well in order to sustain those ecosystem benefits over time. And guidance for these decisions are provided in the management plan. So we'll now take a look specifically at the Charbonneau neighborhood. Again, an inventory of trees completed by certified arborists. And this was primarily done for the trees along Southwest French Prairie Road, and a total of 916 trees were inventoried along this roadway. The inventory found that the majority of trees are over 18 inches in diameter and consist primarily, excuse me, of oaks, specifically northern red oak. 71% of the 916 trees are in good condition. And as I mentioned before, species and age diversity are important factors when planning maintenance and also budgets to sustain canopy and the associated benefits. So looking at growing new trees in order to replace the trees that are over mature and start to decline. And again, these considerations are addressed in the plan. So that concludes the highlights, and I'm going to now transition to provide a summary of the presentation topics, and then get into a discussion on either the project approach, the vision, goals, and actions, or the focus areas, or all of the above. So in summary, the six planning elements were completed to gather a comprehensive understanding of the adaptive management fundamentals. And those are what do we have, what do we want, how do we get what we want, and how are we doing? And this was all summarized in a 60-page research report. From these exercises, we identified the city's strengths and challenges as it relates to urban forest management to create those five goals and the supporting actions that will achieve the vision for the urban forest, as well as the draft canopy goal. Following the discussion tonight, we'll finalize the goals and actions and complete the draft urban forest management plan in September here. We'll then present the draft plan to the Planning Commission in October and incorporate feedback in the final management plan. Following that, we'll present again in November and wrap up the project in December. So that concludes my presentation, highlighting the project approach, the vision, goals, and actions, and the focus areas. And I'd like to now open it up for any questions or comments, or perhaps Carrie has additional information you'd like to share. But I want to thank you once again for your time and look forward to your questions and comments.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate your presentation. So just to clarify, within those focus areas, one thing that you'll see when we present the draft plan is that it contains both lists of trees that should be preserved and ones that should be removed based on their condition. And then the plan also has a variety of planting lists, one specific to like climate change, another is, you know, the others are specific to these, these areas in terms of the focus areas. And then, as Philip alluded to, you know, some of that information was used as the basis of the Streetscape Plan, so. And then, just to clarify, you probably saw within the Town Center area, there were some areas that we didn't survey. Part of that was based on we only had a budget to survey a certain number of trees. But some of those areas within Town Center aren't likely to redevelop, such as the post office and the community college, or it was driven by the proposed street network. So that's why it looked that way in terms of Town Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions concerning this. I'm wondering, you know, you mentioned earlier during your presentation about the tool, the tool that you had used or was being used, the tree equity tool. Is that something that you're going to go more into, more into detail? The reason why I ask that is, I, in preparing for tonight, I actually went and looked at that tool. It's a pretty neat tool. And I even got down to the granularity of looking at my own subdivision and was happy to see that our tree equity score was pretty high. So the question that I have around that is, how much of the detail will this be for neighborhoods? And neighborhoods, since a lot of neighborhoods lost trees? And then also, in your report, will there be a recommendation concerning the specific types of trees that would be in the neighborhoods or should be in the neighborhoods?
Well, I'll start out, and then, Chris, if you could just maybe talk a little bit more about the tree equity score and the system that they have. So, yeah, we hope to use, you know, definitely some information within the plan, but I also see it as something that we would, you know, revisit certainly as we go forward, especially over that 25-year planning period. You know, that would be a key discussion as part of that urban forest working group that we'll be establishing. And that would be a group that coordinates between, you know, parks of recreation, community development, public works. And then specifically in regards to your question about actual trees recommended for neighborhoods, over the last year and a half, we've started a new partnership with Friends of Trees with their Neighborhood Trees Program. And so there'll be two events this fall that will involve, I think it's 100 trees per event. And so we'll work closely with Friends of Trees in terms of the selection of those trees within those neighborhoods, and that's kind of how that would play out. One thing you'll see that's in the plan is we've basically referenced a list that Friends of Trees created for climate-adapted trees. And so all of those pieces will kind of fit together as we go forward in terms of how we work within the various neighborhoods in the community. That's an excellent question.
Yeah, because that tool is, it's a really neat tool. I'm a computer guy, so when I, I immediately jumped on it. And it really allows you to get down to the granularity of the area and see just how a community is doing or where the need is. So I just wanted to, thank you for that feedback. That answered my question, too.
Okay. I didn't, if you want to add anything, Chris, just about, you know?
Yeah, just briefly, that it is recommended to take a look at developing master tree planting plans in the focus areas, and then perhaps extending that to neighborhoods, working with partners like Friends of Trees. And you do want to use the inventory data that was recently updated to make some of those decisions, along with the recommended tree list that we put into the draft management plan. So that'll help to inform species diversity so that pests and diseases that come through don't wipe out a complete, you know, neighborhood block of one species or something. I did want to also mention that we do recommend doing follow-up canopy assessments as part of this. The tree equity score is a starting point. Future canopy assessments may look more closely at the, at the neighborhood level or even down to a parcel level, where you know the percent canopy and the potential planting space where more trees could go. So that's where you can really refine the data and get some priority areas to address equity, to address surface temperatures, reduce stormwater volumes, a lot of different variables. So there are a lot of different tools available. The tree equity tool score is a good starting point for getting that 36 by 46 draft goal in place.
And I think you'll find, we will reference a little bit of it, but there'll be a more extensive report that's coming out of this revisiting of the street tree inventory. And so there's, there's some information that, you know, has been shared internally already about that, and I think the community will find it very interesting.
Great. Thank you, Chris and Carrie, for your comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Willard?
Yeah, I have some questions that are, based on my personal experiences, just kind of align me to what I should expect in this plan that'll be presented in October. So I live in a 30-year-old home, have several mature maples that were clobbered with the ice storm and other things. And so my, my first question is, one of my maples is real, now that it's in mature state, it's too close to our home. And another one was nested with all of my, the water supply lines and the cable lines and the landscaping lines. And so we had difficulty putting them back in the same places. So my question is, should this, what I expect, that part of the policy component of this should also direct our building, our design standards, so that way trees are placed in a location where they can mature in place, so that they don't cause conflicts like the ones I'm experiencing.
Yeah, it's a good question. We probably won't get to that level, certainly. You know, there, there may be some things that we need to follow up on, potentially when we're looking at our development code or our standards, and those would kind of follow a separate path. But we could probably use, to the extent possible, the information that was specific to like Town Center and Charbonneau, because the team, Planet Geo and their arborists, they looked at those trees in regards to like site constraints and other things that can be an issue. And certainly that's going to come into play when we look at redevelopment within Town Center. So we hope to use, you know, that information as we go forward to, to inform, you know, future discussions about, you know, like I said, the code or the standards. We just don't have, you know, specific city-wide types of recommendations like that.
Okay, so that would not be yet part of this?
Not yet.
Okay, I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Chairman, I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So first question, what's the, why 36%? What's the, what's the rationale behind choosing that percentage?
Yeah, that's a good question. Carrie, is there any if I take it?
Yeah, I think he'd probably be more, Chris has worked with the model. I mean, literally, we just, just, you know, discovered this thing, you know, and, and we're trying to, you know, accommodate it in terms of the plan, but yeah, I'll let Chris answer that.
Okay. So initially, we didn't have canopy assessment data to set that overarching goal, which drives a lot of other goals and actions in the management plan. But American Forest completed the tree equity score, and that is really resonating across the country in terms of what urban forests can do and where the, where the gaps are in canopy. We often find underserved areas, lower-income areas with having less tree canopy. So the tree equity score looks at a number of different criteria to get a score from zero to 100. Citywide, Wilsonville's score is 77 out of 100. But when you look at all of the census block groups, which is the geographies that the tree equity score utilizes, we find that there are, I have to look at the numbers again, but more than half are under 75, kind of a recommended level per tree equity. And so 36% tree canopy requires 27,000 trees, which would bring all census blocks to at least a score of 75. And so that addresses canopy, income levels, age, race, human health, and a variety of other factors.
And I'd say, you know, now that we have this new partnership, I mean, I've been working with Friends of Trees for almost 20 years now with their Green Spaces Program, but we focus within that program on our parks, natural areas, whereas the Neighborhood Trees Program is within these neighborhoods. And so, you know, hopefully we'll have more events that, you know, can target some of these areas that may have these deficiencies and, you know, start working our way towards, if that's the goal. I mean, we have to, you know, see what other people feel about this goal, you know, Planning Commission, City Council, our community, so. But it's a good starting point.
Okay, yeah, that's great. And I think, so the only, the other thing I have is, is more, I guess, of a statement in terms of hopefully we can make sure that the, that the goals can align with, with this, that the actions align with it. You know, one of the things that I've, I've seen, I've been on our Arbor Crossing Homeowners' Association Board for like seven years, something like that, and trees have been a consistent area where, where our, our neighbors have struggled, you know, from problems with the specific species that was in the street tree plan, general lack of understanding of what good tree maintenance is. And so what I want to, what I want to really see in this plan is, is, or I say, active outreach with the homeowners associations, making sure that they have all the tools necessary to help support the residents in that, in that homeowners association. And, you know, if possible, maybe even active revisions of those street tree plans for those different homeowners associations, where the city is taking a more active role in helping to define alternate trees for species that we know are problematic. We, we struggled with that a few years ago, trying to find the street tree, and there just wasn't a whole lot of, of expertise for us to lean on, and so it made it very difficult. So anything that we can do to help the homeowners maintain the trees that they have, and then when they need to plant something new, identifying the right ones moving forward, I think will help immensely, in, in my perspective.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, and it really ties into some of the discussions we've been having as part of this winter storm response team within the city, city staff that's leading that effort. You know, we recognize that you really can never have enough education within the community, especially when it comes to the proper maintenance. You know, some of the issues we certainly saw with the winter storm are related to, you know, trees didn't receive the number of prunings or other things that were necessary over time. So, no, it's, it's an excellent point.
Right, and one of the recommended actions in the draft is to create those manuals that lay out the industry standards and best practices for maintenance and proper planting. And then that can be supported by the recommended tree list that we drafted as part of this project, so the city can provide that as guidance or suggested species to plant.
Yeah, and I think, from my perspective, the key is developing that information and then making sure that it is actively passed to the homeowners association so that they can then actively pass it to their, to their residents. You know, if you just create it and it's just sitting on a website, it's not going to be as useful as, if there's some active component there.
Right. And I think one thing that could help, too, is Friends of Trees got some funding to conduct some workshops in the community that would help people understand, you know, those best practices and, you know, how, how people should be dealing with trees, so.
Commissioner Everly?
Very good. All of this discussion about pruning not having been done and so forth by homeowners brought to my mind a surprise four or five years ago, after I had moved to Wilsonville, to find out that street trees on French Prairie are my responsibility as a homeowner. Where I come from, street trees belong to the city. The city maintains them. The city prunes them. If you leave it to me and I can't afford it, it's not happening. So I think one of the things that needs to be looked at is adding, you know, 6% to tree canopy is fine, who's paying for it? If the maintenance is going to be all falling on homeowners and we're trying, we, on the one hand, talk about affordability, on the other hand, dump all of these expenses on either homeowner associations, that then dumps it to the homeowners, then at some point, affordability, just on the operation and maintenance of a house, goes out the window. So I understand why cities depend on homeowner associations to take the load off in all manner of public works activities, but in a big part of the country, those are part of the city's responsibilities paid by taxes, property taxes. So that issue, I hope, is also addressed, because incentives for training and funding for training is one thing, but funding for maintenance is also going to be necessary in at least some situations. I understand perhaps that most homeowners in Charbonneau don't need it, but if you're going to have this kind of broad coverage in neighborhoods that are designed for affordable housing and so forth, it could very, very well end up becoming a, an onus for property owners.
No, it's a good point, and it's something that we've had a discussion within, you know, the, the planning for the project and, you know, looked at some, some potential options there as far as what would it cost to, for the city to take on more of a responsibility. Once again, that all goes back to, you know, is there available funding? You know, what would that entail in terms of the number of staffing? At this point, our public works crew is the one that, you know, is responsible for the street trees they maintain, and, and they don't really have anybody that's full-time devoted to that. So it's a small percentage of their time that's being devoted to that. So it is, it is something, yeah, it's, it's an excellent point, but it requires definitely, you know, the buy-in and support of the city council and how we go about, you know, funding something like that.
Even if you're expecting HOAs to... Even if you're expecting HOAs to discounted rates because of a group, they can get a discount if we're doing this all the maintenance together versus one at a time. That could be helpful.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point, too, where, you know, if we can find some efficiencies that help people to do it in a way where it's not quite as time-consuming and costly, that, that's, you know, very worthwhile.
The other point I wanted to bring up is, I was very pleased to hear that you're going to, part of the plan is to put together manuals and guidelines and so forth, because when I decided that I needed to get an arborist to come and prune some of the branches and the oak trees in my backyard on French Prairie that were way over my roof, and I was worried that in an ice storm that happened the following year after I pruned them, would have fallen on my roof. I learned that the city doesn't require a permit or anything, so long as you have an arborist, was the word that I heard. And then, as the arborist was working on pruning my, the oak trees on French Prairie, the city arborist showed up and said, "No, no, you can't do this, you can't do this." And they had done two of the trees, and they were on the third one, and the guy, the arborist was doing the pruning and so forth, said, "Oh, the city is going to give me a hard time, I'm gonna, I'm not going to be able to do as much as I did with the other two trees." So first of all, having a standard is helpful. Secondly, I would hope that one of the things we look at is to get some form of certification for some of the arborists who are familiar with the standards that the city wants enforced. And that's a list somewhere on the city website, so that as a homeowner, when I go try to find an arborist to come to do the pruning, I can just call one of your people, and they have been trained by the city staff and all that, and there's then no question about it. You can come and do it, and everybody's copacetic about it. And maybe, you know, afterwards, check can be done on the work, and if somebody is starting to slip a little bit, you put them back through the certification training again and say, "Oh, you know, you maybe misunderstood some of the standards." It would be much easier to do it that way than multiple calls to the arborists to come and then stop and then leave and come back and so forth. It just creates confusion.
Yeah, I think anything we can do to standardize and make people aware of and also have expectations, you know, in terms of how these things are done, would be helpful.
Yeah, many cities do have like a registration list or licensing for ISA-certified arborists, and then those are the only arborists to call on for street trees. So that's a good point there, thank you.
That would be great if that was available. Any other comments, commissioners?
Well, we look forward to seeing the meat on this skeleton structure, whatever you want to call it. This is a very nice framework. And at the next meeting, and then the meeting after that, I guess we're going to be having a public hearing on this.
That's our hope. So, yeah, we, you know, we'll certainly see what comments and input you have with the next work session, and we'll take into account what you told us tonight. And, yeah, you'll get to see the full extent of the draft plan at that point.
Thank you very much. We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, everyone.
The next bunch of items on our agenda are all informational. The city council action minutes was included. Do you have any questions from staff on what was in the city council action minutes? I don't see anybody having any questions on that. And then the work program for the rest of the year is included, and most of the stuff we've been hearing continues. We're going to have this urban forest management, Town Center, Streetscape comes back as a strategic, the funding strategy for the infrastructure, Frog Pond is coming back, and we have Transit Oriented Development coming back. These are all work sessions. The only other public hearing that we may have is the urban forest management plan. Any questions on work the rest of the year from staff? Staff, do you have any announcements and questions or remarks?
I don't believe we have any other announcements. I would just like to recognize Georgia McAllister, Assistant Planner, who has helped us out tonight run a seamlessly unflawed meeting in support without our admin, Tammy, here to help us out. So this was her first one, so I didn't have to multitask tonight, and it was a job well done. So thank you very much for your assistance and support tonight, Georgia.
Thank you, Georgia. And you were remarkably relaxed tonight, Ms. Bechelle, as a result of not having to do three people's jobs.
Thank you.
That is all I have. Does, any commissioners have a last word that they want to put in? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Woods has made the motion. We have a second, Commissioner Gallagher. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Ms. Bechelle, you need my signature, you need my signature on some of these resolutions. Could I come to the city hall for those?
Yes, you could. Would you like to do that? When would you like to do that?
Well, whenever they're ready. You have to amend them and so forth, so whenever they're ready, drop me an email or something, and I'll drop by.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.